Good evening, folks. We're happy to have you here for our Traditional Candidates Forum. Tonight, we're going to focus in on the city council candidates, and we have two contested races, our District Five race and then the at-large seat. We are very appreciative to have our friends from Hamilton County Television webcasting and streaming this live tonight, but also making it available right up till Election Day. And so, we're hopeful that the folks at home that are tuning in will share this link with their friends and family before they go to vote. And we're thrilled to have John Elmer, a good friend of the Noblesville Chamber here as our moderator. He's a past president, a past board chair of the Noblesville Chamber, and a member of the Board of Works and a longtime city volunteer in leadership positions. We thought he was an appropriate choice because he's so informed on how the city works and how it's evolved over the years. And so, John, we're so appreciative to have you here tonight, and we're going to let you take it from here. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And just a very quick thank you to the Noblesville Chamber of Commerce for putting this together regardless of, you know, whether a few folks attend or a lot of folks attend, it's a great opportunity. I know we're grabbing some of this stuff electronically for people to review. Also, just thank you to the candidates. I think it takes a heck of a lot of courage, and we really appreciate your being willing to participate. Just kind of a little bit of groundwork, this is not a debate. It's a candidates forum. Our intention is to offer the ability for all of you to have an informed decision at the polls. We are going to give the candidates the opportunity to distinguish themselves from one another. This is a chance to get to know our neighbors who seek to represent us, as I mentioned, and very much appreciated to throw your hat in the ring. And we will ask that they adhere to the scheduled timing. We've already had that talk. And we ask the audience to refrain from clapping for your favorite candidate until after the program. Our format is going to be a quick one-and-a-half-minute opening statement, then we're going to do some rounds of questions. It's developed by the Chamber's Business Advocacy Team, and we just have one-minute answers, so we know that's very difficult for the candidates, but we really appreciate you adhering to that. We have the opportunity for some written questions from the public. You might have saw the cards when you were walking in. And finally, a minute-and-a-half opportunity for them to do a closing. And just FYI, Bob up front's going to be giving them a little 15-second sign, and thank you, Bob, and then he will be giving them a stop sign, and we have asked the candidates to please stop. So, thank you again for those of you attending, and let's go ahead and get into the questions. I think this will go pretty quickly, actually. We did a drawing, and Dave Johnson for District Five is the first person to do your one-and-a-half-minute opening.
Thank you, John, and good evening, everyone. We have just recently heard, learned of the passing of John's mother recently. If we could please just pause for one second, use a little of my time to honor John and keep his family in our thoughts.
Thank you for the thoughts, David. That's very nice. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Johnson, candidate for Noblesville City Council in the Fifth District. My district includes single and multifamily housing and the Noblesville corporate campus in the southeastern portion of the city. I appreciate the Chamber hosting this event, as it was the Noblesville Chamber over 30 years ago that sparked my interest in serving our community. My wife, Michelle, and I were married right out of college in 1976 and began our working careers. We moved to Noblesville with our six-month-old daughter in 1983 through a corporate transfer. Our son was born six years later, and when another transfer presented itself, we made the decision to hop off that corporate bandwagon and put down roots. We love this city. My daughter and son must too, as they and their families live in Noblesville as well. I'm a licensed professional geologist with 46 years of practice. My corporate life started with a Fortune 100 mining company. In 1992, I left that career in the coal mining industry and started a small consultancy in Noblesville focusing on environmental site investigation, property evaluation, and remediation. That career change afforded me the time I wanted to raise my family and serve my community. I support balanced growth and staying true to our unique history. I am fiscally conservative, and I bring over three decades of leadership, experience, and integrity to the council and look forward to serving you, the citizens of Noblesville. Thank you.
Our District Five additional city council candidate, Rocky Shanazoss. And Rocky, a minute and a half.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, John, and Bob, and all the audience. My name is Rocky Shanazoss, but everybody in Noblesville knows me as Rocky, having lived here for over 33 years in District Five. There are two candidates here tonight for District Five, and I'm very excited to be here tonight to express my thoughts and opinions. Over the course of last 40 years, I have employed and managed over 2,000 people through various companies that I manage and own. A lifelong entrepreneur, I've been able to enjoy successes of many of these companies, and based on that success, I've been able to involve myself in a lot of philanthropical opportunities. This has allowed me to give back to my community. I plan to extend the hard-working ethics that I have to disposition for the city council aiming to make big differences here. I consider a good council member to be organized, meticulous, and be able to multitask. He or she should be knowledgeable of local laws and ordinances, and good leaders should be heavily involved in efforts that has everlasting positive impact on the citizen. Council members should also be able to communicate well with administration and serve as a conduit between the community and the public. I believe I possess all of these qualities, and I would kindly ask for your vote.
Thank you, Rocky. The first question, Dave, what will be your top three priorities or goals as a city counselor? And tell us why they are important.
The city certainly faces some challenges right now. Growth being number one, first and foremost. How do we manage that growth? And that growth takes several different shapes and forms, not just infrastructure with streets, roads, stormwater, wastewater, but certainly our public service. We've got to support, continue to support, our public service professionals as they provide that quality of life to our city. I'll come back to growth again as a number two. It's like realtors with location, location, location. Growth is the biggest challenge we have. Growth means people, growth means infrastructure, growth means managing an ever-increasing city, and I think certainly I'm prepared to evaluate that. As we look into the growth in the east, in Wayne Township, that's certainly going to be a real struggle, a real challenge for us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Rocky, what will be your top three priorities or goals as a city counselor, and tell us why they are important?
Noblesville is known for its historic character. Just about everybody that comes to our city uses that and the charm that this city offers as a result. So, preservation of these, preservation of our history, our historic character is of most importance. With all the growths that are happening in Noblesville, that's going to be a number-one priority. I have spent many years passionately following that focus. I have preserved many of our historic buildings here in Noblesville. Where everybody else talks about preservation, I actually do do those. I also am concerned about growth and managed growth. Our growth is imminent, it's coming, and we want to make sure that we manage that to the way that is going to serve our community the best. Those are two of the, and I will elaborate on the additional ones as the time allows later.
Thank you. Rocky, for the second question, you'll go first, and then we'll go to Dave. In the city of Noblesville, there are many stakeholders involved in decisions, including residents, business owners, the city, the county, the state. There are times when these stakeholders' views on projects in front of the council differ. Can you share a time when you've professionally had to bridge differing views, divergent views?
Absolutely. I have brought many projects before the city myself. As an entrepreneur and developer, I have brought in several projects with different views from what was before the council and then a master plan. I do believe that we develop master plans in a city so that everybody would get a fair chance and know what the rules of the games are, and following those are important, and making sure that if anything deviates from that, we bring that information and the knowledge that comes with it to the council. The job of a council is to make sure that they are able to provide counsel to the administration. So, study those activities and items that are necessary for any possible changes.
Thank you, Rocky. Dave, in the city of Noblesville, there are many stakeholders. Sometimes they contradict. Have you had any time when you've professionally had to bridge divergent views?
Certainly, as most recently during my time as president of the Police Merit Board here in Noblesville, we have had occasion to discipline officers, to review training, to review actions in the field, and to meet out punishments appropriate to the nature of the infractions. And again, sitting in these very chairs overseeing that system, overseeing that procedure, and bridging those conflicts resulting in appropriate conflict resolution is a skill I think I possess. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, now for question three, we'll come back to you. What is the biggest challenge or problem facing Noblesville that you really don't hear everyone talking about? Is it something the city should address, or how?
Quite frankly, John, and audience, I think we do an awfully good job here in Noblesville in my work around the state. I travel to many other cities in my work in brownfields development and redevelopment work. We do an outstanding job here. Can we do better? Absolutely. There's always room for improvement. One of the things I would like to see more of is, you know, more and better communication of upcoming activities and projects and all going on. I know the city does a great job, and it's hard to keep up with everything in this day and age, but one of the concerns that I have certainly in the Fifth District, as the Pleasant Street, as the reimagined Pleasant Street project continues, we're going to, you know, the traffic impact that we're going to see on Greenfield Avenue in my district is going to increase drastically while that work is being done. Coordinating with the county with the Allison Mill Road overpass that's under construction, that's going to be challenges that we're going to have to face, and the only way to face that is through good communication.
Rocky, what is the biggest challenge or problem facing Noblesville that you just don't hear being talked about a lot? Is there something the city should address, or how?
Absolutely. We obviously are doing a great job as these projects are put forth, conversations are had. More of communication, I concur with David, about necessity of disinformation be disseminated to the general public is one of those elements that I think we can improve on. We have quite a number of professionals that have been at this for a long time, and they're doing a great job at it. As far as the challenge or concern, infrastructure is a necessary element of any growth. We know that the growth is imminent, so we need to pay close attention to that, and that's going to be one of our biggest challenges. I think that confined by the element of an existing city, we are needing to take a look at our road infrastructures, our sewage treatment plants, and all the other utilities that are necessary for all of these large companies coming into town and trying to provide our workforce an opportunity.
Thank you. Rocky, our fourth question, and you'll lead. Noblesville current budget is $105 million. One of the core responsibilities of the council is to manage the budgeting process, as you know. How have you prepared for this significant responsibility, and how will you approach this role?
Absolutely. I've been studying the budget for the last few years, the trends that we're seeing through the years. I have also been talking to folks from other cities that are facing similar challenges as Noblesville has. I think it makes sense to understand the experiences of others that are facing the same challenges as Noblesville are having, and I've been doing those studies in preparation for my role as a city council member.
David, the current budget, $105 million. How are you prepared to accept that significant responsibility, and how will you approach the role?
Certainly, John, thank you. Yeah, in my career, I've overseen several large, large projects of that sort of magnitude and comfortable with all those zeros and commas, if you will. The challenges that we're going to face certainly are maintaining within the budget constraints that we have, the quality of life that we all enjoy here in Noblesville. We've got to have top-notch public safety here in town. We've got to have the best of roads. We've got to have adequate stormwater. We've got to have adequate wastewater, parks, and supporting certainly the arts and the other issues in town, the other amenities that make Noblesville Noblesville. It's important that we continue to support those activities, important that we have funding available to us to, not only to support those activities, but also to use to attract new businesses to town, because the only way we're going to grow is through attracting new and stronger, better neighbors, better businesses to help us grow the city, grow our tax base, and continue to provide those services.
Thank you very much. Bob, I don't know, did we have any questions submitted? If not, I'm good at making them up. We've got a cheat sheet here. We might just try a couple more quick questions if we continue to follow this, David, if you two don't mind. Within District Five, is there any particular thing unless, since you may have constituents that are specifically interested in your district, is there anything you think unique to District Five? And David, you'll go first in one minute.
District Five is indeed unique in that we encompass a large part of the Noblesville corporate campus. We have great neighbors in the SMC Corporation Index, as you recall, started it all off. We've got ground there that is ready for development, shovel-ready, if you will. We've got to meet the challenges of finding, locating, and seating good business neighbors for us in the Fifth District. The Fifth District also has a number of multifamily homes, multifamily housing, apartment complexes, along with some of what I feel in Noblesville, Wellington Northeast, one of the gems in our city. We've got to balance the neighborhood with the commercial development, and I think we are poised to do that. I'm certainly ready to get to work.
Rocky, is there anything unique to District Five that you'd like to address?
It's very interesting that District Five is on the southernmost portion of the Noblesville and borders Fishers to the south. I was here Tuesday night during a council meeting, and one of the council members from Fishers was here expressing her concerns over the development that is taking place. Fishers was here expressing her concerns over the development that is taking place. We need to be good neighbors. We need to be good neighbors to our neighboring cities, and we, we will do that. I felt confident that that's all part of the plan. My neighbors, everybody in the District 5 that I've talked to, they all have similar concerns over all the development that is coming to Noblesville, the impact of traffic through the neighborhoods, through the areas that are visited, our park systems, their concern about the infrastructures and the capacities, the amount of housing that is coming to Noblesville. And all of those concerns need to be addressed and studied appropriately.
Bob, I can either go to the closing statements, a minute and a half each, or we can ask one more one-minute question. We can. Noblesville, oh, and this will be, who did I start with last time? David? Rocky, you, you will go first. Noblesville's commercial growth is often stimulated by incentives, including TIFs. What economic development strategies are you comfortable with utilizing?
TIF is a great tool. I think that it needs to be used moderately. We are an attractive town, and there's no reason for us to give away in order to attract. Lot of people are interested to come to central Indiana, specifically to Noblesville. This is why we see an explosion of a growth that we're experiencing today. I believe that in order to do the TIF, we have provided some tools to accommodate additional funding, such as the extra excise tax on the vehicles, or the trash pickup that was implemented in six, 2016. I believe we need to revisit those now that we have influx of businesses that have taken advantage of that and see how we can reincorporate that into our strategy.
Okay, thank you. Dave, Noblesville's commercial growth is often stimulated by incentives, including TIFs. What economic development strategies are you comfortable utilizing?
Certainly, thank you, John. The, the TIF, the tax increment financing, it's one of the tools the city can use to support economic development with infrastructure improvements, streets, storm, wastewater, public safety, and other economic matters. The use of TIF is certainly designed to increase future assessed property values in those designated areas to therefore increase future tax revenues. Good for the city, to offset the infrastructure development costs associated with bringing a new business to town. The incentives that are offered via TIF otherwise are necessary. Make no mistake, we would not have Baston Solutions coming to town, relocating their American headquarters from several other locations in central Indiana to Noblesville were we not an attractive place to be. An attractive place to have a business, an attractive place to bring their families, an attractive place to call home. And I think all of those incentives, all of those are necessary to compete against our neighbors to the southwest, southwest, as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now give you an opportunity for a closing statement of a minute and a half. David, you did the opening. Let's start with Rocky for the closing statements, a minute and a half.
Thank you. In conclusion, I wanted to reiterate how excited I am for this opportunity to serve Noblesville. It was a pleasure speaking to you tonight. I humbly ask for your support and trust in me, as I pledge to see all the business acumen that I've accumulated over the years and the knowledge for the last four decades, and I would be wanting to use those to make a big difference in the lives of Noblesville citizens. I believe that I've proven in a passionate, a passionate, passionate way about the preservation of Noblesville's history and unique culture through my various preservation efforts. Wanting more for neighbors, I'm hopeful about providing better services and improve the standard of living for all of Noblesville residents. Information is power, and I am committed to ensuring transparency along with clear data analysis about upcoming Noblesville projects to all Noblesville citizens. Growth is inevitable and imminent. A responsible and managed growth is a key to the long-term success of Noblesville. I promise to look after these projects with a keen eye, utilizing our taxpayers' money and resources wisely. Lastly, as our growth brings us closer to our boarding cities and neighbors, we want to be good neighbors, and I would promise that we will do collaborations, more collaborations with the neighboring cities. There's no reason for us to fight each other. We need to work together to make sure that all cities in Hamilton County are successful.
Thank you. Dave, closing comments, 90 seconds.
Thank you, John. As I've shown this evening, I am a proven community leader with over 30 years of service and dedication to Noblesville's not-for-profit and civic sectors. I support balanced growth that honors the unique history and charm of our city, 200 years old this year. I'm fiscally conservative and will make decisions in the best interest of all taxpayers, listening to their concerns, hearing their voices. I'm fiscally conservative and will make decisions in the best interest of, again, of all taxpayers. I've always been a strong supporter of public safety, and I'm humbled to be endorsed by the members of the Noblesville Fire Department and Noblesville Police Departments. I will serve Noblesville with authenticity, integrity, and honesty. I look forward to your support on May 2nd. For Noblesville City Council, District 5, I'm Dave Johnson.
We will close out the District 5 discussion the way we started with the thank you to both of you, and just reiterating that I certainly don't take lightly the willingness to, to try to serve our, our city. So thank you both very much.
Thank you.
I believe we're going to take a short break to kind of do some change for the at-large, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Welcome to everyone again, and, and thank you to the candidates especially for, for being here. I think everybody was here for the first section on District 5. We're now talking about the at-large council race. We're going to begin with a minute and a half, candidates' opening statements. There's five names here that were laid out, and we'll just go in that order, and then at the end, I'll try to remember how to reverse that, and then we have a schedule for going through the particular questions. Mike Field, a minute and a half for opening comments.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Field, running for Noblesville Common Council at Large. I've lived in Noblesville for all of my 54 years. I've seen it go from a sleepy, sleepy, quiet little town into the marvelous metropolis it is today. I'm married to my wife Karen and have been for 28 years. We have two children. No, they're not really children anymore. Jack is a Ball State grad, and he is a graduate architect for a big firm in Indianapolis. My son Daniel went to Ivy Tech this year, and in six months was able to get his freshman year of college done. So he starts at IU next fall, and as a boilermaker, that pains me in a way that you can't possibly I have been involved in city government in a volunteer capacity and appointed capacity for the past 20 years. I was on the Chamber Board of Directors in the early 2000s. I was on the school redistricting committee for Noblesville in 2012, 2013 school year. I was on the redevelopment commission from 2008 to 2019. So talking about the TIF process, I was intimately involved in that. I've been on the Noblesville Board of Zoning Appeals from 2007 till today. I believe in responsible development, responsible spending, and responsive government. I believe that, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Evan Elliott?
My name is Evan Elliott. I'm a 25-year Noblesville resident, a Noblesville High School graduate, Go Millers, and local business owner. For nearly 12 years, I directed the Speech and Debate Program at NHS, where our coaches helped students become nationally-ranked public speakers, critical thinkers, and stronger leaders for the future of our community. I'm a former franchise CEO for the nation's largest real estate firm, Keller Williams, where I managed over 400 independent contractors, hired employees, directed a seven-figure annual budget, and trained both new and experienced real estate brokers. Today, I operate my family-owned real estate brokerage, Elliott Real Estate, where we continue to have our finger on the pulse of Noblesville and its housing needs. In an economy in which we need answers to our affordable housing problem, I am uniquely qualified to work toward tangible solutions. I'm running for city council because I believe that we all deserve energetic, responsive, and forward-thinking leadership. We deserve pragmatic, fiscally-conservative leaders who value-free enterprise, bridge building instead of bridge burning, and who will put the needs of our people before those of special interests. Together, we can continue to preserve our historic downtown, support local business, strengthen public safety, advocate for the arts, and foster an incredible quality of life in Noblesville.
Thank you. Nick Gomillion?
Good evening. My name is Nick Gomillion. I'm running for city council at large. First, I would like to thank Bob, John, Chamber of Commerce for putting this candidate form together. Municipal government is the most impactful form of government in our daily lives. So it is important for us to be active in this political process. So thank you to each of you, those in attendance and those watching, for being part of this process. I'm a husband, I'm a father, some of my daughters are here tonight, and a 16-year resident of Noblesville. I'm also by day a human resources professional. So I get to deal with a lot of drama at home and at work. My family and I have had the best quality of life, living, working, and playing here in Noblesville for the last 16 years. And I want to now ensure that same great quality of life for all who wish to call Noblesville home. After serving as vice president of my homeowners association, volunteering at various nonprofits, and serving teammates daily as an HR professional, I now desire to serve you in a larger capacity. I believe I can uniquely offer a people-focused leadership style at our city's decision-making table here. I will advocate for connecting each citizen to the best quality of life. I firmly believe that if you want to see change in your community, you have to be willing to get in, roll up your sleeves, and serve others. And that is why I am willing to serve you today. I am here to serve all the people of Noblesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Peterson?
Thank you, Bob Dubois and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight. Also, the Chamber of Commerce weather you brought this week, I really appreciate that. I'm Darren Peterson, and I'm running for Noblesville City Council at Large. I am currently finishing my first term on the council where I serve as your vice president. I've been president before and vice president once before. I've been on the Plan Commission, the Architectural Review Board, three of the last five years. I have served on all nine committees. I'm currently on the Economic Development Committee where I'm the chair. I serve on the Downtown District Committee and the Finance Committee. So I like to get involved. I'm not running just to say I'm on the city council. I like to make a difference. I'm an architect. I've had an architectural practice here for the last 27 years, and that's made me, has helped me be uniquely qualified to look at complicated projects. We've had a billion dollars of committed private investment in the first 30 months of this administration, and having an architect on the council makes me uniquely qualified to work through that and see that. And I really enjoy this job, and I look forward to doing it for four more years. And I really enjoy this job, and I look forward to doing it for four more years, and I appreciate your vote, May 2nd.
I'm guessing this is Paula Gilliam. We'll look, and Paula, it is.
It's flipping. Good evening, and thank you, John. My name's Paula Gilliam. Been a resident for, let's say, a long time. I'll be 72 this year. I started out...I went to Noblesville High School, went through all the schools here in Noblesville, from grade school on up. And when I started my working career, if you call it that, I worked...started at Turtle Creek Nursing Home. So, I've had various jobs. The most important job I wanted to be is when I worked at General Motors. General Motors got rid of us. And I started all over. I've started over more than once. I worked at IDI. And when I worked at IDI, Mr. Merrill said, "It's okay." I got called back to Del Corimy in Anderson. He said, "It's okay." And he's...anytime I want to come back, because they don't have the workers that they had with us. I love Noblesville. I've been on the hand board. And affordable housing is my thing, preservation and affordable housing. You don't have enough affordable housing here, and where are you going to get the workers? I'm also on the state labor roundtable, non-union...I'm union, but I believe in non-union also. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much. In our questions, again, these are 60-second answers. And in our first question, Evan Elliott is up first. What will be your top three priorities or goals as a city councillor, and tell us why they are important?
Well, first and foremost will be public safety. We don't have a city without our men and women in uniform. As our city continues to grow, we will need to budget for further public safety needs, and that must be a priority. Second is infrastructure. We have to maintain our roads, and we have to make sure that getting from place to place is easy and cost-effective here in our city. And I also believe that the mental health of our people is paramount right now. I know that we experienced COVID, and everybody says that we are past that point in time. But when I walk door to door and speak with neighbors, it's almost as if we've forgotten how to talk with each other. And that is a problem. And so, we need to continue to make sure that we're talking to our neighbors and learn how to speak with each other again.
Thank you. Mike Field will be next. Mike, the top three priorities or goals as a city councillor and why it's important?
Responsible development, responsible sending...spending, and responsive government. Responsible development, as interest rates increase, as land prices increase, as the cost of actually building a project go up, we need to make sure that the developers and the people that we partner with know what they're doing, have a realistic plan, and have the capital to be able to complete the project. Responsible spending. Noblesville has almost an embarrassment of riches. But that doesn't mean that we necessarily need to spend them. We need to make sure that we take...pay the bills and be careful with the frills, because sooner or later, you're going to have to pay to support them and to maintain them. And responsive government. We need a government where the citizen knows who to talk to when they've got a problem, or they've got an issue, or they've got a question.
Thank you. Nick Gomillion. Nick, again, the top three priorities as a city councillor and why they're important.
Well, top three priorities, I actually have four pillars that are my guiding principles, and they start with the acronym PIC for PIC, like picnic. So, the first would be public safety. As Evan alluded to, we're nothing without our police, fire, and paramedics. So, we need to ensure the safety of all who live in Noblesville. That's first and top priority. You can look to Indianapolis for examples of poor public safety in place. Second is infrastructure. We've already grown in population since I've lived here. We're projected to double in the next 10 years. So, let's be proactive in planning for roads, bridges, utilities, and water for the citizens, if we're expected to be 100,000-plus in the next 10 years. Number three is community, and that means community involvement. You know, ask not what your community can do for you, but what you can do for your community. We have a lot to be involved in here in Noblesville. And the fourth is kindness, which makes me unique, because I'm going to lead by example. We're missing that in the public discourse these days. People just assume things and don't want to listen to each other. And I'm going to lead with kindness. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Paula, you're up next. We're talking about the top three priorities or goals as a city councillor and why they are important.
Well, as I said before, affordable housing is the main thing, is my top priority, because where are you going to get the workers? And that's the...I think there's a lot of problems now here when you go into the different stores with the workers. You're...now, it's more self...you have to self-checkout more. That's not good, because self-checkout is not paying the bills for...with benefits for the people. And my other thing is transportation would be the second thing, because how are they going to get to work? Because most of the time, you was walking to work here. Now, you're changing the...I live down on Walnut, and you're changing the roundabouts, and you can't hardly get across the street.
You have 15 seconds.
15 seconds. And third, be more of a community like we used to be, because now you have different people in here, different...all different races, creeds. But it doesn't hurt to smile and say, "Welcome to Noblesville."
Thank you, Paula. Darren Peterson?
Thank you. My three goals are, number one is public safety. If you don't have a safe community, or you don't feel like you have a safe community, none of the rest of this matters. That includes our mental health initiatives and our Noble Acts program, to name just a couple, to continue to increase public safety. I think as we grow, it's very important that we balance that growth while maintaining our authentic character of not just downtown, but all of Noblesville. I think that's important balance, that we don't go too fast if we do it right. And also, to maintain our fiscally-responsible investments in infrastructure, not just roads and bridges and water, but also our human infrastructure, as well as what we've done for quality-of-life initiatives. The things like trails and parks that used to be luxuries are now expectations of a community like this. And I want to continue to balance that into a fiscally-responsible. So, those are my top three priorities.
Thank you, Darren. For question two, Mike will go first. And you might remember from the District Five when we were asking about the challenge, if you will, of all the different stakeholders that are involved in front of the city and that come before the city. And sometimes, they have differing views and different needs. Can you share a time when you've professionally had to bridge divergent views?
Well, I can think of probably at least once a month at the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. You have people coming in who have...are in a state of conflict, and we try to find a way to resolve that. Professionally, in my work at Field Rubber Products, it's not uncommon to negotiate prices or to negotiate deliveries or to do...in some cases, you'll have two or three subcontractors working on a job where you have to make peace and put things together properly. So, you know, getting to a positive outcome is something that I do every day, and I've done an awful lot.
Thank you. Nick, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please, if you would.
Yes, we just have a lot of stakeholders on council. You'll have a lot of different varying views and needs coming before you. How do you manage those? And can you share a time when you've professionally had to bridge differing or divergent views?
Yeah, so, as a human resources professional, I deal with divergent views every day. I negotiate contracts between workers and their employers. I also deal with investigations and employee conflict. And it's about listening. It's about assuming positive intent until you have all your documentation, you've looked at the data, before you can come to an educated conclusion. But it's really about listening to people, empathizing with people, and trying to understand where they're coming from. Again, we have a lot more in common than we think, and so, it's diffusing a situation. It's coming to the table and reaching consensus.
Thank you. Excuse me. Paula, you're up next. And again, the question is, just with different folks, different stakeholders coming to the city council with different views, can you share a time when you've professionally had to bridge divergent views?
I think that I've had different jobs. Well, I worked for Ramsey Incorporated for almost over 10 years. And at Ramsey, I was the dispatcher, ordered parts, and did all kinds of stuff to keep the thing running. And I had to make a decision to put my boss in a truck with tools to help us... It was when the summer, it was like 95 degrees, and all the techs were backed up, and I needed him to go. And I said, "I think you got to get rolling." So, and most of the techs, I worked with them, and they worked with me real good, because they were union, and in office, you're a non-union. So, I've always worked skilled trade, a lot of skilled trades over the years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Darren, you might not believe this, but sometimes, there's differing views in front of council. Could you share any example when you've professionally had to bridge divergent views?
Thank you. As a licensed architect in 20...for 27 years, I've got to...had the opportunity across the country to stand on that side of the DS and make those presentations and listen to the community and balance that. And it is important to remember that when someone is passionate, there's something behind that, and you need to listen and communicate. There are a lot of hard decisions we make up here, and not everyone's going to be happy. But as long as you do what's right for Noblesville and what you do what's right for the community, it works itself out, and you got to feel confident about that. But I've had the chance to stand on both sides of the DS, and I think I'm qualified to handle the conflict.
Thank you. Evan, same question. Can you share a time when you've professionally had to bridge differing or divergent views?
Sure. Well, my first time in a CEO capacity was when I was 24, and I was overseeing over 400 independent contractor real estate brokers who were not under an employee agreement with our company. And they generally did not have to listen to what I had to say, because they could leave at any time. One of the things that I made apparent when I came into that role was that I would create the relationship first. I was going to be the one that reached out to begin that relationship. I think so often, we wait for people to come to us, and when they come to us, there's normally conflict, and that's how we begin the relationship. And so, I think as long as we can continue to start the relationship, build the relationship first, that's a very important attribute for any city councillor to espouse.
Thank you. Nick, you'll lead us off on the third question, and you may have remembered it from District Five. What's the biggest challenge or problem facing Noblesville that you just don't really hear everyone talking about or that, you know, no one's talking about? Is there something the city should address?
Yeah, so, I think it is on some people's radar, but it is affordable housing, and I think that's county-wide. So, Noblesville does offer Section 8, Section 42, and income-based housing, which varies from our neighboring cities in Hamilton County that don't provide as much as we do. But yet, there is still a gross underage of affordable housing in the county. So, for a county of 350,000, there's about 2,000 units. That's not enough. And we need to look at the cost of housing, how it's gone up, with inflation, with cost of supplies. I understand it's hard to build new construction under 300,000 in this county. And so, we need to look at all options, whether that's rental, whether it's lease, whether it's lease-to-own. We need to look at affordable options, multi-use homes, apartments, and then homeownership. And I'm a big advocate for homeownership.
Thank you. Paula, same question. What's the biggest challenge facing Noblesville that you don't hear a lot of folks talking about?
Probably about the same thing. Affordable housing, I mean, they're waiting two to three years. And like I said, I was on the hand board, and they only had very few people they could place. And some of them, you know, they end up going to Sheridan to live. But at least they had a place to live, and I think they're going for Tipton now. But you...people that grew up here, that stayed here and didn't make good income here in Noblesville, that's the ones that's really hurting, and they probably don't say that much, because when you're going to the different places trying to get food, and there's a long line of people trying to get food, they're not making enough money here.
Thank you. Darren, same question.
Can you repeat the question?
I sure can. A lot of challenges facing Noblesville. You know, are there any that, you know, aren't on everybody's radar screen that, you know, that's important to you, and how would the city...how could the city address it?
A lot of the problems that we have come out of sometimes miscommunication. And I think, I'm not going to say which Facebook page, but there's a lot of chatter out there about things that we do that maybe are miscommunications. And I think we can always do a better job of communicating. I think our biggest challenge is, though, balancing infrastructure with quality of life. It's not an infinite bucket. We're in the age of tax caps, and how do we make the right investment in the right place to encourage growth and to encourage the next phase of Noblesville and do it in a fiscally-responsible manner? A lot of time, that doesn't always get rewarded until you've made the bad decision. But I think just making...continue to make those right decisions and be out in front and read the magic crystal ball of where growth is going to happen and stay out in front of it.
Thank you. Evan, any challenges or problems Noblesville is facing that you don't hear talked about quite as much? And anything you think the city should address?
Well, obviously, as a real estate broker, I understand the affordable housing issue, and it's not something that is going to be solved overnight, quite frankly. But I am encouraged that we do at least have some tax credit funding coming from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. One of the issues that I don't think we talk about enough is new drugs that are coming into our county. Obviously, as the average income rises, we experience some even heightened drugs that are now within our county. And if you talk to any of our police officers, they will tell you that people are getting more creative. They are getting drugs into the hands of our teenagers much earlier. And we need to make sure that we are providing the resources necessary to our first responders to make sure that they can treat and help prevent those addictions.
And finally, Mike, same question. Anything out there that Noblesville, you know, needs to address that maybe isn't being talked about as much as parking or other things?
Well, I agree that we need to make sure that we maintain the top-notch public safety officials and personnel that we have in Noblesville. And we do need to explore all options, federal, state, local, and private, to try to solve our...the housing affordability issue. A completely different issue that no one's talking about, as Noblesville moves to absorb Wayne Township. Those kids go to Hamilton Southeastern Schools right now. At some point, it would make sense that if you live in Noblesville, you should go to Noblesville Schools. The council is going to be involved in infrastructure to support that. The council is going to be involved with the schools in making that happen, and it's going to happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Thank you. For the fourth question, Paula, you will lead us off, and obviously, everyone will have the same question. It's the one about the city council controlling $105 million budget. It's the core responsibility of the council. And would just like to know, how have you prepared for this significant responsibility? And how will you approach the role of controlling and managing $105 million budget for the city?
It's a lot of money. With me, bottom line would be, what are the city's needs with that $105? How can we use it wisely in the projects that's going forth? And one of them would probably be affordable housing. But that'd be...but I think you should be able to decide what's best for the city and break it down that way. You know, I know some... You know, I know some have top priorities, but what are the total needs? Like, we're still missing a lot of needs in Noblesville. So I think bottom line, you have to come to that conclusion first and work from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Darren, $105 million budget, it's the core responsibility of the council. How have you prepared for the significant responsibility and how will you approach the role?
Well, by doing it. And also sitting down with the directors ahead of the budget time, going through those budgets with them. When I was president, I tried to meet with every director, work through that budget. You have a, you have a budget from last year, how's it gonna increase? Why is it increasing? What can we do to, to not increase or increase or decrease? What was the sand in the gears? And then as we move forward, again, making sure we're making the right decisions and balancing infrastructure with quality of life, with everything else we have to balance. But it's not an easy task, but we've, we've done it and I think we've done it well for the last five years that I've been on the council.
Thank you. Evan, same question. $105 million budget, it's the main responsibility of the council. How have you prepared for the responsibility and how will you approach the role?
Sure. Well, I, I've managed a budget in multiple industries, whether it's been real estate or arts administration. I've worked with multiple stakeholders to arrive at actually crafting a budget and sticking to it. I've attended a finance committee meeting, which is enlightening. If you have not been to a finance committee meeting for Noblesville, it is a thrilling experience. I've met with the directors of each department within the city and heard their needs. I've met with fire and police to address their projected needs. And as our community continues to grow, so will our need for more police and fire. It all starts with an open dialogue on factual information and trusting the people that we've hired, like Jeff Spalding, to do their job in providing accurate and timely information. We also need to innovate our processes as a city and I look forward to continuing that discussion as we move further.
Thank you, Evan. Mike, the budget's 105 million. It's the city council's responsibility to manage that. How have you prepared for this significant responsibility and how will you approach the role?
Well, I'm a third-generation small businessman. My grandfather started Field Rubber Products in 1955 on the east side of town. My father took over from, took over 100% in 1996 and I bought him out in 2012. I understand the budgeting process. I understand how you have to adjust those budgets for emergencies, for new opportunities that come up. I sign the front of the paychecks at Field Rubber. It's, it's my money and I will treat these city's money the same way. It will be spent wisely, it will be spent efficiently and it'll be spent to the best good, to the greatest good of the community.
Thank you. Nick, $105 million budget and it's the main responsibility of the city council, one of the, the core responsibilities. How have you prepared for the significant responsibility and how will you approach the role?
Yeah, so as a human resources professional, I've been in charge of our own department's budget at various industries that I've worked in, banking, healthcare currently. And then also overseeing payroll and going through the whole budgeting process there, working with finance. So it is about listening, it's about meeting with each department to understand their needs and their wants and differentiating the difference there. It's also about being fiscally conservative. And I've also been on my homeowners association as the vice president there and we kept, kept a healthy reserve. So we always had enough just in case those emergencies happen and it's about being smart with your money. And so it's about assessing all the data, looking at the numbers, meeting with the CFO, understanding everything, asking questions why, and not being afraid to oppose some of the decisions to, to meet the best needs. Over 40% of our budget goes to public safety. I'm gonna make sure that our fire and police are always well-funded.
And the fifth question, we'll start with Darren, throwing you a curveball. This wasn't in District 5.
Thank you.
Not just you. This wasn't a District 5 discussion, but a question. There has been a lot of progress in many areas in the past four years in Noblesville. What's one initiative that you agree with and one you disagree with? 60 seconds.
I stand by every decision I've made that we've had here in all these initiatives. And it's gonna take a little time to vet out which ones have gone well and which ones have gone wrong. I think COVID threw a real curveball at us and a lot of things, we headed down a path that we needed to adjust on. Some of that was the fear that our budget was gonna dip significantly. So now how do we reprioritize? So perhaps if something that didn't maybe go well was maybe a little bit of a, of a, didn't have, didn't have the crystal ball to see what COVID was gonna do. And maybe we overreacted or overcorrected a little bit. Some of the things that I think we're doing well, Noble Acts has been an incredible program. I think our mental health initiatives, I think what we're doing with the arts community. I think all those things have been very successful and I continue, I look forward to continuing those programs.
Thank you. Evan, a lot of progress in many areas in the city. What's one initiative that you agree with and one you disagree with?
One initiative I agree with would also be the Noble Acts program. I, I think that that addresses the, the very core of our community, which is its people. And it provided a new department for us to deal with those types of mental health issues. As far as things that could have gone better, the Levinson has obviously had vacancies as far as commercial is concerned because unfortunately, there were some things done in the development that didn't exactly allow for businesses to move in because they didn't have proper ventilation. So I would say that, that that is one minor thing that we just need to be cautious of next time. The Nexus Apartments, I believe, could have probably been built a bit differently. I'm not necessarily a fan of the, the frontage and where those apartments have to, to look out. But again, I'm nitpicking, we are doing great in Noblesville.
Thank you. Mike, same question, a lot of progress, but is there any initiative that you certainly agree with? And maybe one that you do not agree with?
I'm, I'm gonna jump on the bandwagon here for, for Noble Acts. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful program to try to get people help as opposed to incarcerating them. I think it's, it's fantastic. Noblesville's done a lot of really, really good things over the past few years. There's one thing that I am concerned about and that is the acquisition of the Firestone property. I'm in the rubber business, I know the rubber business from my father and my grandfather. I know what it was like in the 40s, I know what it was like in the 50s. And I have some real concerns about the environmental degradation that occurred there. I am not saying that the environmental testing that has been done to say that it is, has a clean bill of health is in any way inaccurate. But I am afraid that there will be something discovered that is not a problem now, maybe a problem in 10 years. And the city's gonna be on the hook for it.
Thank you. Nick, same question. A lot of great things have, have happened. What's one initiative that you agree with and maybe one that you've disagreed with?
So the one I agree with is the partnership with the Preservation Alliance and putting boundaries in place when it comes to preserving our historic downtown. I'm a big history buff and so I wanna make sure that we, we keep our charm, we keep the stories from our ancestors that we can tell, that all voices are shared and that we can all learn from the past. So I appreciate the preservation and the balance there with progress. One initiative that I think could have gone better was I don't understand the Federal Hill. We invested $10 million in a park that my family enjoyed. And then four or five years later, we tear it up and put $50 million apartments right on top of it. So that's one that left me scratching my head and one that I would probably not advocate for had I been on the council at the time.
Thank you. Paula, same question. What's one initiative that you agree with that, that's occurred and what's one that you've disagreed with?
Well, first, the Pleasant Street projects in some part of it, I guess. I really didn't like it at first and I think the more you're, because the construction is so terrible. But looking at that, I, first I was thinking, oh no. But I, I can see in the long run, the transportation, the people can access 37 a little bit better. And so that, it's a good thing. And like him about the Firestone, Firestone, that property and the grounds around that property and certain areas, some of them barrels are coming up. I got a friend that lives in a section and some of the barrels are starting to rise up. So there's more contamination in that area than you think. So that might be a headache down the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, do we have public questions or would you like me to add another question from the previously prepared?
Okay, we're, let's just do one more question before we do the, the closing comments. And if you don't mind, Evan, I'm just gonna go back to the order of the, the first round. That would have you go first. And, you know, there seems to be different versions of the same type of question about growth. And, and this says, ask, the city council spends a lot of time reviewing residential and larger commercial developments. How will you prepare yourself to be ready for that role? Is there an area where you see more opportunity for Noblesville? And again, just 60 seconds. Evan?
Sure. Well, I deal with them every day and I, I think as more builders come into the area, the goal is build one pretty quickly, move on to the next. I have had some fairly terrible foreman experiences in a few communities where people, where they're basically saying, we've had city inspections, it's all cleared. And in fact, none of that has been done. And unless you come in with a private inspector, those folks would have had no idea that there was an issue in their home. So I, I believe that it is imperative that we continue to ask more questions of our developers. And that's not to say that we're going to create a less cordial relationship. It just means that when folks come before us, we are Noblesville. We, we are in a great position and people want to be here. And we just have to continue to put forth that energy.
Mike, same question. The council spends a lot of time reviewing, reviewing, excuse me, residential and large commercial developments. How will you prepare yourself to be ready for that role?
Same way I do on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Read, 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 read. Drive out and take a look at it and then read some more. The petitioner, developer, builder, whatever you'd like to call them, will, will put together a, a presentation in writing with drawings and pictures of what they're planning. The city will put together a, a packet of what planning thinks of it. You have to read them both, write them down, write questions out, get in your car, go take a drive, go take a look at it, see what it looks like. The, the most important skill that a, a councillor has or will have in the upcoming few years as these projects get tighter and tighter and stranger and stranger, is the ability to say no. And I can do that.
Thank you. Nick, same question. A lot of time reviewing residential and the larger commercial developments. How will you prepare yourself to be ready for that role?
So it's about doing a lot of research. I'm a numbers guy, so I like to see the data, I like to see the documentation, I like to see it for myself. I'm not afraid to ask questions, to ask why. I'm also gonna always advocate for residential. We do need commercial to bring in business, to bring in jobs. They need to be a variety of jobs for all skill levels. But I'm a big advocate of, of residential housing, homeownership, I believe in private property, private property rights. If you really wanna create generational wealth and asset that you can give to your family and to pass on, it starts with homeownership. And so I will always advocate for the residents of Noblesville before I advocate for developers and contractors.
Thank you. Paula, same question. Lots of opportunity for residential and large commercial developments. How will you prepare yourself to be ready for that role?
Like they said, research in the company that come in before us and, and see what kind of work they do. Go on some of the jobs they've done. And going in, check out the area, different times of the day or night to see, you know, what the traffic flow would be. Would that be a good area to have what they're asking?
Thank you. Darren?
Thank you. I've been preparing for this job since the eighth grade, since I wanted, decided to be an architect. And so I've also been a member of the Plan Commission and Architectural Review Board for three of the last five years. This comes naturally to me to review these plans. One of the things I've made an effort to do though is work with the developers, meet with them and say, it's, it's a good project, but you can do a little better, especially if you wanna be a partner and you want us to help you with this project. You, you need to do a little better and always ask them to just raise that bar more and more. We've said no to several projects in the last couple of years because they weren't Noblesville enough. But also, we made an important step last night at the council. We approved a position that a lot of times, city government, the pace of government is frustrating and it's frustrating to some developers. And when you have a billion dollars of committed private investment, you need to make sure you have your ducks in a row. And we have been analyzing our internal processes and we created a new position that will help be a liaison between those departments to help things not slip through the cracks, but also to ask developers to do a better job.
Thank you. We're ready for closing comments and if you remember our sophisticated system over here. Paula, you went last, we'll let you do closing comments first. It's up to 90 seconds. What closing comments would you like to share?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and sit and answer the questions and get a little feeling out of coming up and taking the time to apply for a job, like as representing the people. But as a citizen here, Noblesville's always been a great place to live. I appreciate going to school here and met a lot of friends. And like I said, I don't know what else I can say about Noblesville, but I just love it.
Thank you very much. Darren?
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity tonight to speak about ideas. I really have enjoyed and continue to enjoy my time on the council. I have enjoyed making a difference, I've enjoyed being involved. I think you gotta ask yourself if you're better off in 2023 than where you were in 2019. I think the answer to that's yes. Even with the global pandemic, we're in a better position. And I wanna continue to build on that momentum, continue to be fiscally responsible, to maintain our authentic character and continue to invest in public safety. And I look forward to your vote on May 2nd.
Thank you, Darren. Nick?
So at our meetings at work, when we, when we leave for the meeting, we always ask everyone, we go around and say, how are you checking out? Well, I'm, I'm checking out enthusiastic. I'm excited about the coming days and about the coming years for this great city. My family has had the best quality of life, living, working and playing here in Noblesville for the last 16 years. And I wanna ensure that same great quality of life for anyone who wants to call Noblesville home. I have a unique people-focused leadership style and I'm gonna ensure everyone is welcome and no one's left behind as our city continues to move forward and as we double in population. So I'm asking you for your vote on May 2nd. Help me lead Noblesville into tomorrow as we care about the people of today. Remember to pick Nick on May 2nd on your Republican ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Evan?
Thank you. First and foremost, I wanna thank everyone up here for a kind and productive conversation. It is apparent that we need a real estate professional on the council because the most important issues that we talked about tonight and most frequent were affordable housing and knowing the builders and developers that come through our city. I offer the most comprehensive experience in this race in that my track record spans nearly every area of expertise that our council requires, including local housing issues, the purchase of real estate, contract negotiation, board member service, public relations, workforce training, budget review, small business leadership, arts administration and working inside our schools. This diversity is critical to our community because while we have a lot of chatter in Noblesville, we also need people to stand up and make the tough decisions. I'm a past candidate for Noblesville School Board, served as co-chair of the Noblesville GOP and past secretary of Noblesville Cultural Arts. GOP, and past secretary of Noblesville Cultural Arts. I'm a director for the Belfry Theater, a volunteer for the NHS Theater Program, and volunteer for Noblesville Sister Cities, which partners with dignitaries from Italy, Brazil, and Ukraine. I'm an active member of the Mibor Realtor Association and proudly serve as a local elections inspector. I earned my bachelor's degree from Purdue and hold a certificate in negotiation from Harvard Business School. I will continue to be a student of civic leadership and will always put the needs of our people first. This is my hometown, where I've lived, learned, worked, and played for 25 years, and I will always fight for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Evan. Mike, you want to close this out? A minute and a half, closing comments?
Certainly. Thank you. I believe that local government is the most important branch of government. Local government tells you what you can do with your property. It tells you where you can locate your business. It tells you how fast the traffic is going to move by in front of your house, what your sign can look like on your store. I believe that local government needs to be conservative. It needs to be small, and it needs to be fiscally responsible. These are the things that I stand for, and these are the things that I am, will try to bring to the table on the council. I believe in cooperation. I believe in getting to yes. I believe in collaboration, but I also believe that there are times when the only answer that you can provide is no. I'm capable of doing that. You have to be able to say, no, this project's wrong. You have to be able to say, no, this developer's sketchy. You have to be able to say, I know the police department or the fire department or the street department says they desperately need this piece of equipment, but we simply can't afford it right now. I've done that in my personal life. I've done that in my business, and I can do that for you. Please vote for me on November, on November. Well, let's get, let's get through May 1st, May 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just, we're going to start closing, and I don't think we had the opportunity like we did with the District Five candidates. Darren, first, thank you for your service, and thank you for being willing to try to continue, and to the four of you, I would just say thank you for being willing to try to serve the city. I certainly don't take it lightly, and I think it's a huge responsibility and a commitment, and we really admire it and we appreciate it. So we would just like to remind everyone that it's hard to believe, but you're probably happy that early voting is available, and now at the Hamilton County Judicial Center, as well as the Hamilton County Fairgrounds. Sometimes the best-kept secret, you can slide right in there and vote with no problem. It's through May 1st, and Election Day is obviously May 2nd. We'd like to thank the candidates, as we've done, our audience, and those folks online, our big friend Jim Wofford, who we all love with Hamilton County Television, the city of Noblesville for using the beautiful chambers. Tonight's event will be available on-demand streaming at HamiltonCountyTelevision.com and the Noblesville Chamber website, and finally, once again, thank you to the Noblesville Chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1771.36][1771.36][applause]